All right, we are ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. This is a combined special meeting and council work session. Calling the meeting to order and giving notice that the city council may vote to go into executive session for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett, here. Vice Mayor Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
And Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
All right. Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
It would be my pleasure. Please stand if you're able.
Councilmember Sweet, will you read our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Councilmember House, would you read our land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right, next up is the open call to the public. This enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on tonight's agenda. You will have three minutes, and there is a clock right down here that you should be able to see. And because it's an open call to the public, and it's about, you can speak about something that's not on the agenda, the council does not respond or ask questions. First up, Matthew Dyer.
Hello again, everyone. Sure you love hearing from me. I'm here to talk today about a liquor license application for Batty's Food Joint. I've provided everyone on council-supporting documents just to follow along. So somewhere there's been some disconnect between the city and the state governing bodies. Maybe it's because the owner of these establishments keeps changing his business and his LLC every time that he gets caught doing something bad. It's hard to follow social media because the owner has so many at this point. But I brought a photo of his post today about his event. That's on page number two. Page number one shows that his liquor license is expired as of today, but they're still planning on serving, so. Yeah, page number three shows that the public, the city, and the liquor department have all protested that license. And page four and five demonstrate the disconnect between the police and the liquor board. How does one have criminal charges, but the police have found nothing against him? Those are all legal documents from the state. I hope the city takes this seriously, because if someone was illegally serving liquor with their knowledge, I don't imagine the public would be very happy. If we do nothing about this, we set a precedent for the legal sale of alcohol and as a bar owner. I feel I have a responsibility to do it legally, and I want everyone else to do the same. I will be calling the police every day. They remain open without a license. I don't find any joy in this. And I'm not here for myself, but on behalf of all the people that are too scared to speak up. I know some of you are probably tired of me, but today I come as a concerned citizen, not as a business owner. Having license is a privilege, and it means you have to hold yourself to higher standards and respect our laws. I left my contact info on there. Please contact me if there's something I'm missing, because I'm just trying to piece it all together. So if there's something I'm missing, or if the liquor department messed up, I'd at least like to know about it. I contacted one of our special agents today and left a voicemail. I haven't heard a reply yet, but hopefully I will. But lastly, I'd like to say farewell to our leaving council members. I know we have had our disagreements, but I understand it's a difficult job, and you give it you all. So thank you for your time and service to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Blake Witten.
Ready? Counsel, you know me through several online public comments this fall. This week, I flew into Flagstaff to meet with neighbors and community leaders to discuss our next step in the wake of the noise ordinance defeat. What can I do to protect my 40-year investment and my family's financial nest egg in my home that I have nurtured and remodeled and successfully rented for 35 consecutive years to happy tenants until this year, 2024, in which I have been unable to rent my home due to noise nuisance? On Saturday night, I did a real-time sound check at my home. At 11:00 PM, noise from the tavern back patio was fine and was not a problem. But by midnight, as the tavern became packed, music and voices penetrated my bedrooms loudly, loudly enough to prevent sleeping. This is why I have been unable to rent my home this year. Though I can't say yet what the next steps are to protect our residential integrity and property values in the South Side, I can tell you what we will not do. We will not sue individual businesses, as has been sometimes suggested. We understand that in the South Side's, excuse me, CC zoning, other bars that abuse their neighbor's property values the way that the tavern does can pop up at any time in other locations. So this is a neighborhood issue, not only my issue. We hold the City of Flagstaff responsible for its most basic purpose, to protect the health and property values of its residents. I would like to close by thanking councilmembers House, Harris, and McCarthy for their votes to protect and support South Side property rights and quality of life under the city's proposed noise ordinance, even though it failed. Thank you.
Thank you. Trace Ward.
I have a brief presentation here, so just bear with me as I get it up. Terrific. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Trace Ward.
Can you lift the microphone up a little bit?
Okay, how's that? Is that better? Mayor, Vice Mayor, Trace Ward and Council. Trace Ward, CBB, Discover Flagstaff Director. I'm going to take just three minutes today to make council aware of the fact that Discover Flagstaff has successfully renewed our accreditation as a certified destination marketing organization. We originally went through the accreditation program in 2019 and were approved with distinction. That's because of the fact that we provided additional information and proof that we're doing things above and beyond the standards that were put out by Destinations International, which is the governing body out of Washington, DC. The new accreditation process was completed recently and is in effect till 2028. So the program has over 100 industry standards and codes of ethics. It must be met. That must be met. This took Discover Flagstaff over four months to complete. And to put it in perspective, there are 2,500 destination marketing organizations around the globe, and less than 200 of them are accredited. So this is a big deal for us. It's something to show that we are very serious in our silo, our vertical. Some of the standards include: proof of annual financial review; the CEO or executive director must have a high level of education experience and certification; demonstrate accountability and transparency; must have vision, mission, and position statements, which their annual marketing plans derive from; provide an annual report; must have advocacy plan and be proactive in the community initiatives. And the list, of course, goes on from there. So very proud of the professionalism and the high level of community engagement from the Discover Flagstaff team, and I wanted to share that with you today, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Trace.
Sure.
Next up, we have Mary Ann Dominski.
Hello, Counsel. My name is Mary Ann Dominski. I am a new employee with the Arizona Attorney General's Office, based in northern Arizona with the community engagement team. And so I just wanted to stop by to introduce myself and to let you know I'm nearby. I live in Prescott, and I have been assigned to Coconino, Yavapai, and Mojave Counties. So if the city is doing any outreach events or outreach activities, I would love to participate and help plan those. If this council has any concerns, they would love some help bringing up the chain of command at the Attorney General's Office. I would be happy to do that also. So just wanted to stop by. I will also email my contact information, so you all have it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number five, review of draft agenda for the December 17th, 2024 meeting. Counsel, do you have any comments or concerns about the draft agenda? All right. Then next up is farewell presentation for outgoing council members. And we are going to, staff's going to present, and then council will be able to add comments. We're going to do one council member at a time. And then after council gives comments, then we'll meet down at the end, so that each council member can receive their gift, and we'll take photos.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are operating without our city clerk at the helm, so anything can happen here. While it appears to be scripted, it's going to be a little bit of a free-flowing event, as the mayor described. We're here to chat a bit about Councilmember Jim McCarthy to start. And these notes we put together, we'd like to share with you some key accomplishments. Councilmember McCarthy, over eight years of your tenure with the city, thank you so much for that. Throughout that time, you have continuously fought for funding for daily Amtrak service through Flagstaff. We are now friends of Amtrak. I'm probably not getting the title of that organization correct, but...
All aboard Arizona!
Yeah, all aboard Arizona. That actually sounds better. And that was much to your doing, and it's an honor to be part of that process. Such a worthy cause. You have demonstrated continuous support for the Rio de Flag flood control project. At some point, we're probably looking at the beginning of 2026, there will be shovels in the ground, and I think it would be great if you could have a presence there, because it's been a long journey, and you've been a part of it. You have served as the liaison for the Transportation Commission. Much appreciated. You also chair the Metro Plan Organization, and that is also much appreciated. Obviously, underlying all of that is, I think, a passion for transportation. Along with that, and as has been noted with one of our public speakers already, you've been an active participant in the policy discussions related to noise regulation. We know this is also an ongoing journey, and it will be something that you have championed, but will see continued discussion, pardon me, with the soon-to-be-seated council. We will continue, we will carry that torch and continue that policy discussion. Wanted to thank you for all your involvement with that. And finally, and certainly not least, is you have advocated, continued to advocate for advanced water treatment solutions. That is something I think we should all look forward to, is going to be on the horizon for the city. We have ongoing discussions on that. Eventually, those discussions will turn into outcomes and results. But it all starts with dialogue, and you've been a part of that dialogue, and so we are greatly appreciative of that. We're going to do a little tag team here. Do you want to go next?
Yes. Well, thank you, Greg. I think I get to do the fun slide. So a few tidbits about Jim. Councilmember McCarthy, he plays the guitar. I'm sure a lot of you already knew that, and he's a big fan of the Beatles. So much, in fact, one of our DC trips this year, there was a crosswalk, and we actually had to take a photo on the crosswalk, which you will see later in this presentation. He's spent much time in the Grand Canyon National Park, in the park, advocating for the park, and has just been a strong advocate throughout his career, not just on city council. He frequently injects humor and levity into the council meetings. I think we can probably come up with many examples. We know that his house is extremely insulated, that Jim's an engineer.
He is an engineer.
He's an engineer. But we've enjoyed the levity and the humor that you've brought into our council meetings. You're quite comfortable immersing yourself in very technical discussions, and we have a joke that you know if you forget a period or capitalization, that Councilmember McCarthy will always find it, and we appreciate that.
And commas in particular.
Commas in particular. You enjoy conversing with staff, and I think I will also add that you're very kind to staff, and we appreciate you very much. And you've devoted many years of leadership to the Flagstaff community. So with that, Mayor, I think I'd like to turn it over to you to get some comments from council. Thank you. And we do have a public commenter that I will take after council has shared their thoughts. Would you like to go first, Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. So Councilmember McCarthy, I just wanted to thank you for all of your years, but on a personal level, you really helped me when I got elected, learning the ins and outs of planning and zoning. And we did a lot of field trips together and went out to the site to really look, so I could understand what the issues were. And you always took my calls and really helped me along the way, and I just really appreciate the time you took to kind of grow me as a councilperson, so thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy, I can remember when I was first appointed to council, and you were so welcoming and warm and kindly sharing the messages of the, not only the consideration that you all put into that appointment, but also just the willingness to support the learning that had to go into that process, the fire hose that I was drinking out of, stepping onto a council basically in the middle of things, and the encouragement to use my voice and step into the fray regardless. So I am eternally grateful for your kindness and your words, your wisdom, and your guidance over these past couple of years. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment about you. I was, is that right? I was part of the council that appointed you initially, and then you reran. And I just want to say, it was such an easy decision. You were head and shoulders above all the other candidates, and you have not disappointed me in the slightest. Thank you.
Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Matthews.
Jim, with you stepping down, you're the only council, you're the only person up on this dais who's been around longer than I have been. So with you leaving next week, that leaves me as the oldest-serving member of council, God help us all. And I kind of wanted to focus on that with my comments. You know, your longevity and your institutional memory goes back way farther than the eight years you've served on council, to your time on various commissions and your involvement with city politics and city policy in between. And I think that is an asset that is going to be sorely missed for a long while here. I always found your ability to articulate things in an even-keeled, straightforward manner, sounds like an engineer to me, but just... manner, sounds like an engineer to me, but just, you know, you, you're always able to cut through some of that stuff and make things easy to understand, and you've always been able to bring historical context to our conversations that has just been super valuable. And, and I'm nervous at my own ability to sort of follow up with that skill, and I hope to lean on you continually into the future as, as long as you'll take my calls and my texts. I will note that I, I actually found many of your jokes to be actually really funny.
He says with surprise.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's some of the groaners that are coming to mind right now.
Others were dad.
I always appreciated your ability to sort of be lighthearted and bring music and your guitar into the equation. I love how passionate you are about Amtrak and trains. You know, I tried to take a train home from my trip to Albuquerque with the Astronomical Society because of your example. And of course, there was a derailment near Williams that day, and so I was stuck in Albuquerque for three extra days, and that was my experience with Amtrak. But it just goes to show you, there's, there's so much more to do, and it's a worthy cause to advocate for. Thank you so much for your time on council. I want to thank your wife as well for putting up with us, putting up with our long nights, our crazy schedule, and we know that she has some particular challenges, and that you have dealt with your own personal issues over the past year, and have always come through, not just victorious, but with, with a really clean spirit and positive attitude. And that's just something that I looked up to a lot, and you're a great example. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Councilmember McCarthy, first of all, I don't know how we're going to enter into executive session without Jim. Somebody will have to take that baton. But I really appreciated just your knowledge and your, your insight into so many things, and, and for this council, this body council, to have, you know, at times, very different views on issues. I really respect the fact that we respect each other, and we get along, we don't take it home with us, because there was no offense ever, even if we're passionate about something. And you were a big part of that, and I really appreciate it. And as I'm finishing out my second year, I'm just now starting to feel like I think I might know what I'm doing a little bit. So you definitely still will be very missed because your, your longevity on council and what you've seen and what you have experienced and the decisions that you've, past councils have made that then impact us today, and bringing that forward to educate us on those issues have been invaluable. So a lot of pressure's on Austin to step up. But I really appreciate everything that you've brought to the dais, and I do appreciate your wife on a personal level as well, and all that she brings to our community. So thank you, and I know you won't be a stranger, and I know you will be more than happy to volunteer your insights when asked, so thank you so much.
I'll pass that, your comments on to Kathy. Thank you very much.
Councilmember McCarthy, I have enjoyed having you to my left. I can hear the jokes under your breath, and sometimes others don't even get to hear those. One thing that I've appreciated, there are several things that I've appreciated about you very much. One is that I know you're always going to come prepared, and so if we're looking at an issue that is kind of technical or difficult, and I'm struggling with it, I know that I'm always going to find someone who can help me look at the issue when we get to the, the council meeting, because you are always so well-prepared. And I also appreciate, as, as others have said, that no matter how contentious the issue is, and no matter how passionately any of us feel about it, that it's not taken personally, and we can walk away from here and be fine and come back to the next issue. You comport yourself with a lot of dignity and respect, and it's very much appreciated, and you will be very missed. But I know that you will, just as you participated in the community before you were elected to council, I know that you will continue to participate in the community and maybe on a commission, should you choose to. So thank you for your service. And Mr. Garcia, did you want to speak about both candidates, both? So I'll leave it to the end, end, end. Okay. So how...
Mayor, I, I do have a comment.
Oh, yes, please.
Isn't it true, Mr. McCarthy, just for clarification, you are an engineer?
Well, to become a professional engineer, you want the technical answer? I, I, I did pass the Engineering in Training test, EIT. I passed it, but I never took the full PE, Professional Engineer test. I just never got around to it because I was an engineer in aerospace, and we didn't really need it. Yes, I am an engineer. Estoy en el aer.
No further questions from the city, Your Honor?
Well, what do I say now? You left off one of my major accomplishments, and that was hiring Greg Clifton. I was involved in that process, and I'm very proud of that decision, and I see a lot of heads nodding out there. So thank you, Greg, for leading the, the city. You know, when I was first on council, I realized that some people would learn to love me, and other people would learn to hate me. And I guess I'll dwell on the love part. I've got a couple of cards here. Thank you, Miranda, and Scott. Hi, Scott. Now, talk about knowing some history. Scott Overton, of course, was on council when I was first on council, and he's still around. What a great guy. Anyway, I've gotten cards, I've gotten cards in the mail in the last week or so. I've, I see people in the audience that I don't normally see here. Thank you. And I've gotten emails. A lot of people are thanking me, and I, I really appreciate that, and I'm proud of that. I also say that, like I said at the start, some people learned to hate me. Well, in, in some of those cases, I'm actually proud of that, too, because they hated me for reasons that were inappropriate, when I did things that I knew were right. After talking to the whole community, listening to both sides of the issue, and then making a rational decision, I've always tried to do what was right and not worry about who hated me and who loved me. So I guess the last thing I'd like to say is that in my eight years on council, in my six years on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I chaired for one year, for my five years on the Water Commission, and I, I also worked on the Mountain Line Board, the staff has not been perfect, but they've been about 99.5% perfect. I'm really proud of our staff here at the City of Flagstaff. I've worked in industry, I've worked in volunteer organizations, and the staff that we have here under the leadership of Greg and the previous city managers has been right up there, and I'm really proud to have worked with you. And thank you, all of the staff, thank you. The staff does all the work in the background and makes it easy for us to make rational decisions. Now, as far as Sterling, he's always given me a hard time. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. It's, I'll have to admit, I'm kind of looking forward to having more time off, but I can tell you that I am really glad that I took the time to run for city council and to serve on council for the time that I have. And councilmembers, you all have my phone number. Feel free to use it. It didn't change. Thank you.
Do you want to do a photo now, and then, yeah, one last photo for council? Yeah, again in the middle.
Mayor, can I lean on you to present him with this little gift? Thank you.
We have one more.
Councilmember McCarthy, I just want to say thank you, too, on behalf of all our relatives that you served. And I know that you not just served certain pockets, but you served everybody, and I'm thankful for that, for, from the people that I come from, so thank you. And I also just want to say your name in this holy, sacred place, Jim McCarthy. May you be, continue to be blessed, and may you live and share with others and, and also with us for many more years to come. So I got these potteries. I've got this pottery for you, for your family, for where you can put it. Also have an explanation of what, what they mean, the, what the designs mean. But I think the, one of the things that I want to just share is, real quickly, is just that this has the Navajo basket design on it, and it just means that you will, we usually put all our valuables, our ceremonial valuables, valuables, our personal valuables in the, in the wedding basket, and that's where it rests so that it can always be, be blessed to carry us forward. But the color here just means that you've reached that part of your life where you're an elder, you stand with ethics, you stand with wisdom, and that's the time that you share with people like our vice mayor, right, to make him wise, too, and all of us. So thank you.
I just want to, I just want to thank Rose. Thank you so much. And I want to say that in my eight years in council, I've had some wonderful experiences. And some of the ones that really go to my heart is that I, as one of the council members, the whole council went, met with the Hopi council. And Scott Overton remembers that I sang a song for them. He, he cringed. But we also met with Navajo leaders, and we met with Havasupai. We actually flew down into Havasupai and had a meeting. We met with the Wallapai. Those were all very meaningful meetings to me. Thank you, Rose.
All right. Are you ready, Ms. Deb? Okay, there's that beautiful smile. So a few key accomplishments about our Ms. Deb. Certainly a champion of the Murdoch Center. This is an area that she supported prior to council, and we've seen the Cleo Park as part of this time, and just lovely to have that opportunity and Jim to share with our community. Actively participated in the Southside Neighborhood Plan, created a great document that guides some of the future investments of the city into that neighborhood, effectively advocated for a civic plaza, the Downtown Connection Center. The building is looking lovely, and we're excited to see what that continues to bring. She continuously advocated for personal outreach to community members. I know many times when we were talking about issues that impacted our community, Ms. Deb was reminding us to make sure that our outreach was getting to those areas of folks who might not be able to make it to our meetings. She was a champion of inclusion and equity throughout the city, was a commission liaison to Parks and Recreation, our PROS team, and certainly worked to cultivate strong relationships with Northern Arizona University through our Town and Gown Program. For these things, we thank you, Ms. Deb.
A few more things, if I may. Councilmember Harris, Ms. Deb, we know you as the councilperson who listens to everybody, and generally, you are the last one to speak, which just exhibits how much of a listener you, you are at the dais, and I think beyond. Oftentimes, you are the voice for those who are not in the room. You speak with candor and firmness, but with a smile, and we have all seen your heartfelt compassion for neighborhoods and the community as a whole, giving definition to the term "acting locally." We love the professional background in academia that you bring to the dais, and that has added to the wealth of expertise and wisdom at the dais. Finally, we note that you have a propensity to connect people with resources, and that has always been, been evident in the solutions that you come up with and the contributions that you offer in the many dialogues that occur at the dais. So we are grateful. We know that this has been a two-year tenure, but it's one that is full of content and accomplishment, and there really is no start nor end to this leadership that, that is exhibited at the dais. It's a continuous process, and folks hop on board, and they contribute, and they leave a good mark, and then at some point, they exit. We are grateful for the contributions that you have brought. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor?
May I start us off? Councilmember Harris, thank you so much for your service. You have served in a civic capacity now and throughout your life, here in Flagstaff and elsewhere. Meanwhile, you've raised a family, and you've raised a community. So grateful for the passion and the voice that you bring to the issues that you serve and, and to Flagstaff. You know, you, you, you chose to step forward at a time when, when things were pretty rough for everybody around the city, and it's no small feat that you chose to stand in the breach during that moment, and we're all much better off for it. Your, your, your time here on council has been relatively short, but it's been relatively impactful as well. And I think one of the things that is so valuable about having you up here as part of our hive mind is... of our hive mind is that attention to folks who aren't in the room that you always call back to. You have been a very powerful, strong, and articulate advocate for people who don't have their own voice and who don't speak. We're going to have to remember to carry that spirit forward without you driving it home for us all the time. And I have no doubt that you will continue to be in this room time and again with us to make sure that that point gets driven home. Again, thank you so much for your civic engagement throughout your life, for your service on this council, and we'll see you again soon, I'm sure.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. So, Ms. Deb, I really have learned a lot from you in the last two years, and to kind of echo what councilmember Aslan has said, I hear your voice when I think of some of the bigger issues that we face. And that's a huge compliment, because I don't always hear voices, but I hear yours. And as I move forward, I will, I will bring your knowledge and your care for this community into these meetings, and just know that your presence will be with me, and I can't tell you what an impact you've had, and I just really appreciate everything you've done for the community, not only as a councilperson, but as a community member who really has put your heart and soul into a lot for Flagstaff. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Deb, I don't know that it always goes this way, but I feel that at least I have a special bond with you. We've shared, you know, some moments together over the last two years. We look at ourselves as the two, including Jim, with the most lived experience that brings a different perspective. And there is numerous times where I was thinking, I was considering all that are impacted, and you would remind us that, well, maybe we aren't reaching out, maybe we're not considering that some people don't have social media or don't get their information in certain ways, maybe we're not considering how this population group would look at something different than us, and you've taught me so much. And I promise that I will continue to see through your lens as best I can, and I'm going to miss being dais partners, and I hope that we will continue our friendship far and beyond what we do here on the dais. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember House?
Ms. Deb, I wrote you a poem, and I'm going to try and get through it. Obviously, a little emotional. The world will remember you by name, by touch, by echoes and ripples and seams, ties that keep you interwoven. You are quilted, combined. The shadows you cast are light, candles dipped in ageless oils, waxes that bend but last unbroken. Look out and see your flowers, the laurels laid on paths you paved. Reverberant, hear your resonance in aspen applause, the pines that bend and bind you to these halls. We honor you by name, by touch, ripple and verこshe, ashay, ashay, echoes of asante, asante, asante.
Councilmember McCarthy?
I just wrote a song a couple of weeks ago. I'm not going to sing it. No, the song had nothing to do with you. Notice the word "had" is in the past tense. Is always listening, Ms. House, read that. I want to connect you to this song I wrote somehow, at the very least dedicate it to you, because it was about caring about others, and it was about doing the right thing, being kind when you can and you always can. And I made just that verse about you, because, or at the very least, I'm going to dedicate it to you, because that was very touching to me. Before I read that, what I was going to say is that you're a leader, and you don't have to be on council to be a leader. You've been a leader for years, and you and I have talked in the last day or so, and without getting into any specifics, you're going to be a leader on some new issues, and I want to support you on that. And just thank you, and I really mean that from my heart. You've been a very important part of this council, and keep leading.
Ms. Deb, you have, you have been an example for the entire community of how to hold strong values and strong beliefs and step onto a council where you were forced to consider more and new information, and I think that you are the demonstration of how to do it with such grace and understanding and intelligence, and you're a model for all of us when we have really strongly held beliefs, which we all do, and we're up here with six other people where we have to consider those perspectives as well as the perspectives of all of the community that we are out talking to, plus any financial constraints. There's so much to consider, and as everyone else has said, I have appreciated how throughout every conversation, you're always bringing those who aren't in the room into the room so that we can make sure that we are thinking about an issue from multiple perspectives. And I would say that this city council is so much better for having you served with us. I just, I think that we are all better leaders through your example. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you all for the accolades. It's always nice to have people say nice things about you when you can still hear There's a song that we used to sing in church when I was younger, and they would, it goes like, I'm not going to sing it, so don't worry about that. But one of the verses is, "Give me my flowers while I yet live, so I can see the beauty that they bring. Friends and loved ones will give you flowers when you're sick and on your deathbed, but I'd rather have a truckload of daisies than roses when I'm gone." So, basically, that's it. So, I appreciate all the daisies that have been given to me. I appreciate our staff. I've told you over and over and over again that I would stack you up against any staff in the country, and so I wish that we had a staff kind of Olympics or whatever, and we would win, because I really do trust you and your judgment. I've been, I've learned so much, and you've all been very patient with me. Sometimes I can't be the person that everybody wants to be patient with, so, but you all have been very patient with me, and you've taught me so much. You come into a position, and you think you know it all, and then you find out that you know absolutely nothing. And you've sent me home on many a nights to my Google. We have become really good friends on Google, and I Google everything now when I don't really know a lot of what's going on, and I'll sit here and Google some things and say, oh, okay, that's what that means. Greg, you've been kind and generous. You had an open-door policy. You allowed me to call you up and be the person that I can sometimes be, because I was like, Greg, you know? And you never get upset. You just kind of calmly, you know, respond to me, and that always brings me down. And so, I appreciate that about you, and I think your staff gets that from you, because they see you do that, and so they can't help but to do that. Sterling, absolutely loved being on council with you being our attorney. I could always depend on you, the looks, the, and I knew that when I got a certain look, it's just shut up, Deb, just leave it alone, because it's not going to be pretty if you keep going down that road. So, but I appreciate that, and I value your opinion so much. And above all, I trust all of you implicitly, without any hesitation whatsoever, and that says a lot. I think a council has to trust their staff, and if you don't, it's not going to be a good, you know, year or two years or four years or whatever, however long you're on this. We didn't always agree, but we weren't disagreeable, and that makes all the difference. And so, I appreciate all my colleagues, and yes, you know that I will be coming back. You know, I know I get three minutes. I will stick to the three minutes. I will not go over and abuse my, you know, my three minutes, but thank you all again so much. I really do appreciate and value the time I spent on council with all of you. So, thank you.
Your Honor, one minute for rebuttal, please. Honestly, Councilmember Matthews already stole what I was going to say, which is, you truly make sure everyone gets a voice. Everybody has an opportunity to be heard even if they're not here, and that we as staff make sure of that. If I had one phrase to describe Ms. Deb, it's "by the people, of the people, for the
Ms. Deb, I just want to say thank you to Yehat and Tzaga for all the work that you've done. I've known you in the community before you became, came up in council, and I always admired the things that you've done. I know that some of the things that you follow, and that made me feel good, was the fact that when Mayor Coral used to say, "We have a lot of voices that aren't here. Some of them have to work two or three jobs. That's why they're not here. They don't have the time to come and sit in council chambers to speak their voice." So, I know that you carried that torch once Mayor left, and you've taught all the other council members on doing that, and now they've committed to carrying that as well. So, I really appreciate that. I also want to say your name in this sacred lap of our sacred mountain, Ms. Deb Harris. May you always have a rich life, that you always walk in that, on that golden path of our, what we call our tuidadeen, our corn pollen pathway. So, I want to also, there's an explanation on what the pottery is about, so that's that. And also want to present you this, this one.
So, before we take a break for a little reception, I'm going to call up our public speaker,
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel, I came before you today, particularly Jim and Deborah, to, as my predecessor for a future seat, out of a sign of respect, and to give you guys a little kudos for all the work that you've done, and to let you know that your voice will be heard through me. We'll start with you, Jim. In 2016, either you voted or seconded me being on BPAC, and your stern advice and words as you glared at me from the same, about same place you are now, was that you knew that I didn't have any respect, or respect, that you knew I didn't have any experience, and that you knew that I didn't have an experience in art or leadership or anything like that, but you said that you believed in me, that you were going to hold me accountable for the work that we had to do in that department. And ever since then, I've always taken heed to you on council and watched you closely, because it was almost like, you know, speaking to a father figure in that moment. And since then, I've learned that it's important to do site visits, it's important to really get your hands dirty when looking at the issues, and in 2020, when we ran together, we became friends, and that was really important for me. I know I have huge shoes to fill, and I hope that I at least can fill one of them for at least the time being, and work my way into that other one as time goes on and I learn the process. Deb, something invaluable that you taught me is how to be your true and authentic self on the dais, something that I cannot wait to take part in, where you can be stern, where you could show discernment, and you can also be a little sassy in defending your voice and the voice of the people that you represent. I pick up a lot of things from different councils over the years, but this was, I think, the final key that I needed to really propel me into being successful on the council. And in the words that you have embedded into my mind, I will learn to disagree without being disagreeable, and bring that voice of the underserved and the unspoken at every opportunity as you're speaking it. It won't be coming from me, Deb, it'll be coming from you. So, out of kindness and respect, I just wanted to show some, some respect for you guys, and thank you for your service.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, let's take a little recess. We have some snacks out in the lobby, and we will celebrate our outgoing council members.
Okay, we are reconvening this meeting. And thank you, staff, for that lovely send-off of our council members. Consideration, we're down to item number nine, consideration and approval of a contract. This is with DEMA and the Arizona Department, or, or our emergency management, sorry. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Mayor and Council, Stacy Brooklyneggs, Emergency Management Director. I do not have a presentation at this time. We have had this agreement in place for many years. It expired December of 2023, that we found out from the state and did not realize. They had a new one that we needed to enter into. So this is for sharing resources with the state of Arizona for when we need emergency assistance. There's many cities within the state that are on this, and we will be on that now with them if this gets approved. And so I have any questions?
Council, do you have any questions? All right, I will entertain a motion to authorize the compact.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're in a special meeting right now, so action is appropriate. That's what we'll need. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the contract with DEMA.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'll third.
Don't start getting smart-alecky now. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving down to item number 10, consideration of appointments. We have appointments to the Indigenous Commission. And we have just one appointment, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Cheryl Lee Francis to the position of the Indigenous Commission for a term ending December 2027.
I'll second. Hold on just a second, isn't it December 2026?
Oh, is it? Okay.
So 2026?
December 2026.
Okay, and we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have two appointments to planning and zoning. First up, we have Councilmember Matthews, and then we have Vice Mayor Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Josh Mayor for a term ending 12/27 to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Vice Mayor?
I would like to nominate Mary Norton to the remaining available term.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we have one recog- we have one appointment, Vice Mayor Aslan to the Water Commission.
Yeah, so typically with one appointment and only two applicants, I would be hesitant to move forward and ask for more time for a bigger applicant pool. But I would, without hesitation, nominate both of these applicants to the Water Commission. I have known both of them and worked with both of them in terms of water. For now, I am going to nominate Karen Wadzak to the position, but I do hope that Karen Modesto stays in the pool and becomes available for an opening later.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And it, just to note that we appointed three water commissioners last week, so that's why there are only two remaining. All right, so I'm adjourning this meeting and getting right into our work session, calling it to order, giving notice to the general public and council that we may vote to go into executive session for consultation with our attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. First off, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This will be brief. I want to start by giving some props to those who are stepping in to fill in for Stacy in her absence. Georgiana is behind the control panel up front and doing a great job. And Annie in the back, it's a nice team effort, much appreciated. I know that Stacy appreciates it as well. A couple of quick tidbits, and, and we'll be finished with this. Appendoned to this report, though, you do have updates from Economic Vitality, Human Resources, and Risk Management, and Housing. So I invite you to read those at your pleasure, always good information. Last week, on Wednesday, the leadership team met up at Lowell Observatory at the new Discovery Center, which is fantastic, and had a wonderful retreat. It was facilitated, and many in the room here were responsible for putting that together, notably Shannon Anderson, Heidi Hansen, and a number of others. It was a great retreat. We try to retreat as a leadership team about three or four times a year and take time to talk kind of a forest-through-the-trees type of discussion, you know, how we're doing as leaders in the organization, ways to improve, things to learn, and skillsets to acquire. So it's all very positive. It was a wonderful retreat. Wanted to take us back a little bit to November 13th, which seems like a long time ago. The Discover Flagstaff had its annual partner luncheon meeting. Many of you were attendant. It was fantastic also, and that was held at the High Country Conference Center. Very well attended, very exciting, many speakers, including Vice Mayor Aslan. Thank you for your comments. So props to the Economic Vitality team for putting on a wonderful luncheon meeting. Really appreciate it. A few other tidbits there for your reading enjoyment. I do want to mention, you know, and Councilmember McCarthy, this might be gratifying for you to hear during your, what is now your last council meeting, but the May Hicks House, things are moving on, not literally, but figuratively. We will have an update in front of council soon, and it'll be a nice collective staff presentation. Just want to give you that heads-up that we're moving forward on that project.
Yeah, that came up in a discussion I was involved with just last night.
Excellent, yep, very exciting. I am not going to go through it, but I would invite you all to give a read to a rather heartwarming story involving one, a few members of our fire department. Take the time to give that a read, it's very nice. Lastly, I want to bring to your attention again something that's going to be out there on the horizon. We, I think we have this penciled in on the January 7th meeting. Very important topic, and that is the quiet zone and train horns. There's been a few meetings of very late, very recently, with the Federal Rail Association and many of our staff talking about this. One of those meetings was on-site. I don't want to get ahead of the discussion, there will be a lot to unpack on January 7th, so coming your way. I think that's it for now, Council, unless you have any questions or comments for me.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, City Manager. I saw in the opening for your leadership team meeting that you all did communication skills and personality assessments in Myers-Briggs. At some point, it would be really cool to hear what different staff on the leadership team, what their Myers-Briggs indicators were.
We are having Sterling prepare all the necessary disclaimers, and once, once we get that in place-
It's 100% confidential.
Coming your way, thank you.
That tells me exactly which Myers-Briggs personality indicator you might have.
Do I wear my feelings on my sleeve so clearly?
All right, thank you, City Manager. All right, multicultural county park sculpture exhibition project overview.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Kristin Carrido, Project Administrator in Beautification Arts and Sciences. I'm here today to provide an overview of the multicultural county park sculpture exhibition and also provide a preview of the artworks selected for year two of this project. This exhibition is an annual rotating exhibit presented in partnership with Coconino County, and it displays incredible large-scale sculptures that represent diverse cultural representation. And each and every year, the City of Flagstaff engages five local and regional artists by providing them resources that enable them to create at this scale and in this public setting, which is very exciting. All of the artworks on display are loaned to the city by participating artists for the duration of the exhibition. So, I am very excited to share with you our recently completed project video. It was completed earlier this fall. This video tells the story of the multicultural county park sculpture exhibition, from conception to completion to celebration. And it also highlights key elements of the project, like objectives and key outcomes. So I hope all of you will enjoy it. And I do want to say, I'm sharing this video off of YouTube, so hopefully we do not encounter a commercial. But if we do, I will adjust and skip that commercial as quickly as I can.
So if you go around the southwest, you see many indigenous symbols, icons, and artworks, but you don't see them around Flagstaff very often. And this has been a concern. I brought Rose to the county park, and we walked along the trails, and I said to Rose, "What do you think? Should we have a sculpture exhibition with an indigenous representation theme here?"
And we're talking about the different ideas for the project and where we wanted the art to be. And once we had clarity for the space, it started to sprinkle. It was a real gentle sprinkle, and I told Jenna, "In my Dina culture, we talk about spirituality and how we believe the holy ones agree with a prayer or a conversation. They bless it with moisture." So it sealed the deal. Through the visibility concept, community members wanted more indigenous names for streets, buildings, parks, and public art to depict and honor indigenous people. As conversations grew, it turned to including other people of color to have visibility through the arts. It was important to take on indigenous kinship attitude and to share the space with other relatives through multicultural means.
The decision to open up the project from indigenous to multicultural was great because one of the things we struggle with in the city is finding diverse representation in the artists and the art. Once you parcel it out into the different groups and say, "Okay, how many people in those groups are artists? And how many people in those groups can do public art?" The pool gets smaller and smaller, and sometimes we tend to work with the same artists.
We have an opportunity to showcase art with the important theme and purpose of representing indigenous cultures.
I discovered the call to artists, and this particular request was for artwork that would embody or include cultural traditions like iconography, storytelling, or a connection to nature, the land, or the community. Having studied anthropology in college, I was really inspired by this particular project's concept. So I worked with my friend and fellow artist Reggie Fitchett with Divine Art Creations to come up with an idea, and we applied. And then when we were chosen as one of the four artists to participate, I was super excited. To be included in a project representing multicultural perspectives in a public setting was a really wonderful opportunity for me to share my perspective and values in a way that would also enrich my local community.
The citizens of Flagstaff are very proud and outspoken about what Flagstaff is. They want things to be unique and not necessarily something you'll see in any other town that doesn't represent the city in some way. And this way, public art really is about place-making.
And so putting the art exhibition in a natural setting has been very important. It has tied it to its core because the relationship between the indigenous cultures, nature, and the city is so strong.
To me and my people, Flagstaff has very big spiritual significance. Growing up off the reservation, northern Arizona has allowed me to connect with nature. It's where I draw inspiration for my art. I've always felt that the most important thing an artist can do is receive recognition on a hometown level. It is a huge honor.
And it's, it's really nice to be able to have a part of my culture represented here for the City of Flagstaff.
My goal for this project is to inspire others with my art. I love to study ancient Mexican cultures and draw inspiration from them when I'm creating. Over time, I've been developing this sense to keep digging and researching, learning that everything is connected to culture and nature. All this information is in my DNA, and I think it's important to share it with people to keep the culture alive.
My dad was one of the first generation sculptors of the Shona stone sculpture movement of Zimbabwe, where I was born and raised. I wanted to understand why my dad was an artist, and I aspired to be like him from a young age. Since then, I have always wanted to be an artist to share my family-oriented culture across the globe. The City of Flagstaff is acknowledging the importance of including art from all walks of life in the community, and I love that.
My parents kind of scared me away from pursuing a career in art at a young age, so I went to college, and I didn't make much artwork for over a decade. It was only once I got back to Flagstaff and discovered these grant-funding opportunities to participate in public art programs that I picked it back up again.
Art always takes a backseat when funding is low or scarce. It's important to highlight the city's effort to support artists and fund these types of projects.
From a public parks perspective, these open spaces provide opportunities for personal enrichment and enjoyment. Parks also play an important role in mental health, stress relief, mindfulness, and contemplation. When you add the opportunity to enjoy the arts in an outdoor setting, in my view, you're getting the best of both worlds.
It speaks volumes about making someone feel welcome and like they belong, and this project is a way to do that.
Now it is my honor to introduce my friend, Liz Archilada. I want to thank the City of Flagstaff and Coconino County for their collaboration on this incredible project and this addition to the Elizabeth Liz Archilatha Park.
It's a wonderful thing for the people coming into this area to see how the art is tied to the land. It gives all the artists an opportunity to share their stories, and it shows that Flagstaff is recognizing all different types of cultures, and that's a major thing.
Our culture has really evolved as a whole, and I feel like nowadays, society is much more purposefully inclusive and celebratory of various cultures. They're all here and all in the mix, and I think this is one way that I can support the movement of embracing, including, and celebrating diversity.
It's about love, it's about togetherness.
It's about preservation.
I truly believe these types of projects bring people together, and they come to appreciate the healing qualities of art. Being represented in a public space also affirms belonging and inclusivity. It engages all community members to see what is important to people and to begin to appreciate each other.
Creativity is a silent universal language that weaves all cultures together.
Oh my gosh, hurry, hurry! I got it! So, how do artists learn about this opportunity, and how do they participate in this opportunity? We disseminate a call to artists each summer, and that is sent nationwide, but we really focus our outreach on the region, in the southwest, on the Colorado Plateau, and in northern Arizona. Our marketing, or excuse me, outreach strategy is comprised of three components. The first, targeted emails, and as you will see in the slide, a lot of emails were sent. The second, strategic social media. So, not only is this opportunity disseminated through City of Flagstaff's social media platforms, but we also rely on the social media platforms of nonprofit arts and cultural organizations throughout the southwest, in particular here in the city as well. So, Creative Flagstaff, The Artist Coalition, Cultural Connections, and also NAU. They were wonderful in helping us get the word out about this sculptural opportunity. And then, we also rely on personal outreach, and we have really grown this aspect of our outreach strategy this year. Last spring, I had the opportunity to attend the Sculpture Festival in Tucson for the first time, and this was an incredible return on investment. Six artists who were showing at that festival applied to our sculpture exhibition, one of whom, Adrienne Wall, was selected to participate in the 2025-2026 exhibition. And then, as you just experienced, we also have this new project video, which will become a very critical component of our outreach strategy. And already, we've been utilizing it to spread the word. We have shared it on social media. We have shared it on the City of Flagstaff's website. Coconino has shared it out as well, and we have included in emails to our listserv, which includes more than 500 artists and creatives. Artists are selected by a selection panel that is comprised of representatives from various councils and commissions, not only from the City of Flagstaff, but from Coconino County as well. And I want to send a special thank you to each and every panelist this year. They had 31 proposals to review up from 13 last year, which is something we're also very excited about. And then they attended a very lengthy selection panel meeting, and they spent time after that meeting reviewing their notes and then scoring all 31 proposals. That scoring resulted in five artworks and two alternate artworks that were selected for the year-two exhibition. These proposals were approved by the Beautification and Public Art Commission in September. So, as you saw in the video, as you've experienced maybe out at the Archiletha County Park, this project has a vision, and it's had a vision since its inception. Beautification Arts and Sciences wants to continue to uphold that vision. We are committed to doing that. We want to broaden awareness and engagement. We want to encourage inclusivity and the diversity of applications. We want to foster community capacity by building local skill and local talent. We want to enhance the Archiletha County Park and the city as a cultural destination, and of course fulfill all of the city's, correction, various city goals, policies, and key priorities that were shared out with all of you in the staff summary report. Okay, so an exhibition preview. And just a reminder that all of the artworks on display are loaned to the city for the duration of the exhibition, and they can be either newly created artworks or existing artworks. And we will start with this sculpture. This is entitled "Atlachinoli" by Oliverio Ballcells. He is a valley artist who incorporates Mexican history and culture into his artwork. In this particular sculpture, he is speaking to this Mesoamerican concept of atlachinoli, which is essentially when the rainy season, which is represented in blue, meets the dry season, represented in red, and the sun reaches its highest point in the zenith. This is a newly created work, and it is fabricated from steel. It stands approximately five feet tall by two feet wide. Next, we have "Wings of Ancestors", also by valley artist Isaac Caruso. And this piece serves as a reminder how valuable our ancestors are in uplifting the community. Our ancestors are represented by the large hands, and we are represented by the smaller hands. And this artwork also includes a bench. Visitors to the park will have an opportunity to sit on this bench and be enveloped in this bird shadow that is created by the wings of our ancestors, and to reflect on the contributions that there and all of our ancestors have provided to this world. This sculpture stands approximately 12 feet tall by eight feet wide. It is fabricated from old-growth reclaimed ponderosa pine that is harvested from Coconino National Forest. Next, we have "Celestial Juggler" by valley artist Joe Ray, and this artwork celebrates the timeless pursuit of understanding the cosmos. This is a newly created work, and it's from the artist's "Time Traveling Ancient" series. So, in this series, figures from the pre-Columbian past journey to the 21st century to experience our modern world. So, it's very much this fusion of ancient wisdom with contemporary knowledge. Here we have an Aztec figure. He is juggling the planets and charting the heavens. And this sculpture also ties into Flagstaff's history as a dark sky city and our astronomical pursuits. This sculpture stands 12 feet tall and five feet wide and is fabricated from aluminum. "Thunderstorm" by Adrienne Wall is an existing piece, and the artist resides in Hemis Pueblo in New Mexico. He is very interested in climate change, particularly the frequency and the intensity of thunderstorms, and how they affect his people and the landscape of the southwest. This piece stands six foot four inches by six feet by four inches and three feet wide, and it is fabricated from granite. And finally, we have "Changing Woman". This is a newly created piece by Dineh artist Lance Yasi, who resides in Tuba City. This artwork celebrates changing woman who resides in the San Francisco Peaks, and she is responsible for the creation of the forest first for Navajo clans. It is fabricated from limestone, and it stands approximately six feet tall. So, the Multicultural County Park Sculpture Exhibition has currently been budgeted for three years, and as we've discussed today, we are in year two. That said, we are very much interested in obtaining feedback from council about whether you feel that this is an investment worth continuing. So, I ask council now if this sculptural exhibition is the type of project that you are in favor of continuing to see programmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a big thank you to everyone involved in this project. I'm lucky I get to serve on B-PAC as the liaison and have been able to watch this from beginning to end, and it's amazing the amount of work you do. And I think this project is very important for Flagstaff. It speaks to a lot of cultural diversity. It puts us on the map. It is something that our community can enjoy, and I just really am proud to have been there the opening day of this, and I would certainly like to see this be extended. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet.
Councilmember House.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, for the amazing video, and for the preview of what's coming. Definitely want to see this continued beyond the three years. And I would also just further encourage, I know that you've done outreach, a lot of outreach locally, but the further communication with the neighborhood associations, the local schools, and beyond, there's a lot of artistic talent that exists in a lot of these neighborhoods, and particularly among some of our young people that is often not put on display, and it would be a really great opportunity for them to get out there and get their vision of the Flagstaff community and their cultures and their stories able to be displayed like this. So, definitely look forward to seeing this continued for a long, long time, and just encourage all the outreach that we can to encourage folks that don't usually get a seat at the table to maybe come out and chisel one.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, and then Councilmember Matthews.
I would also suggest that you might want to think about how you can get people who are not used to doing the paperwork. You know, you have to do a proposal, you have to do, so a lot of young artists that are very talented, they don't enter their work because they don't know how to do that. And so, I'm not sure, you know, that's a huge job, and so I'm not expecting you to take it on all by yourself, but somehow, if we could figure out how to help them to do that, that probably would be helpful, and it probably will open it up so that you will get more diversity.
Thank you. And I do want to share, I've been doing that the past two years, albeit minimally. I receive phone calls throughout the year from artists in Flag, especially in Flagstaff, who are incredibly talented but don't necessarily think of themselves as public artists, or don't understand how their work can translate from a 2D to a 3D form. And so, I've been having some really wonderful conversations with them, connecting them to individuals who can help develop their ideas. So, one of the, an example of that is, you know, sharing a list of fabricators in the valley that can really help them hone their design and see their design, again, from conception to completion. And we also have been doing outreach, attending, for example, some events on the reservation and doing outreach to individuals who might not have access to social media or to computers as well, and hoping that that'll translate into some more proposals received in future cycles of this opportunity. So, thank you very much for that suggestion.
Thank you, Mayor. You, for the most part, already just answered my question. I was going to ask, what outreach in our local tribal communities? A lot of artists, you know, they do their art and they have a local presence, but they may not be connected to our network. It surprises me when we had a meeting yesterday with the local commission, and I was surprised they didn't know all the things we did on another subject. So, we always assume, you know, that they know if they're in the art world that they would know this. So, I'm happy to hear that you're doing presentations and activities out in the different tribal communities and maybe letting them know that they can, you know, get help to transfer their artwork over to an outside public art and what resources they would have with that, because they may not even think that that is, you know, like, how do I get that into a forum that could be outdoors and stuff?
Absolutely.
So, I know that I've seen just people that consider themselves doodlers, for lack of a better term, that are just amazing artists, and I'd love to see, you know, their talents expressed locally for sure. So, I'm all for continuing this. I think it's just a great enhancement to our city, and I look forward to just expanding it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to share, we have a database of more than 500 creatives, and we do share regional public art opportunities with them. We are also surprised to learn that many of them don't seek these out or aren't aware of these opportunities in our community or regionally. So, we make an effort, when they become available, that we share them out with our constituents as well.
And just remember, a lot of our tribal communities, they don't even have electricity, right?
Correct.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, who produced the video?
We worked with a creative team, Outlive Creative, and they are located down in the valley, and they are incredible storytellers, and we are thrilled with their ability to...
Did you see Outlook?
Outlook. Creative.
Cool. I definitely think we should continue this. This is something we should be doing ongoing, possibly into perpetuity. Very valuable, great for our community, underrepresented, underutilized. We need more public art in Flagstaff and whatever we can do to bring more public art. Let's keep doing it. Let's scale it up.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Aslan, I just said Outlook Creative. It's Outlive Creative. Thank you. I didn't finish my Coca-Cola before my presentation. Any more questions?
I will just second what everyone else said, more public art, art everywhere. And the sculptures were going to be taken down in October of this year. Were they taken down, or are they still up?
No, we have extended the exhibition, and we will continue to have the exhibition open in May, and it will be deinstalled each March. So, the current exhibition is on view through March 15th, and then the artworks will come down, and we will have a new exhibition come May.
Well, anyone who hasn't seen it should definitely make it over there and see it. Councilmember.
Great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, next up, item number four, council update on banking services procurement. Hey, this is new, isn't it?
Just happened, overnight. I'm just wondering, how do you follow something like that besides a 45-minute presentation on banking services within the City of Flagstaff? No? Forty-five, in a video for 30 minutes? Well, video of spreadsheets, right? All right. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. Today, I am providing you with an update to the process of putting out a procurement, a formal procurement relating to banking services. Per council directions, earlier this year, we will be formally procuring banking services this fiscal year, and the current contract expires September, or not September, June 30th, 2025 for us. So, I just wanted to give you an update of the process, where we're at, and what our expectations are. Here's kind of an overview of what we'll be talking about today. I'm not going to talk them out, because we'll hit a slide on each one of those. So, first off is how are we going to go about procuring banking services? We are going to be using a request for proposal, or an RFP, for this process. Why an RFP? There are several reasons that make an RFP the right tool to get banking services in place. This is really the preferred method that many other organizations, counties, cities use when they're going out and procuring banking services. But here are some of the reasons why. You know, scope is not definitively defined. We don't know how many checks we're going to cash each year, or write, or how many deposits we're going to make, so it's really hard to hard-bid numbers for a banking services-type contract. Services are complex. The nature of what we're doing is ever-involving and changing as far as the banking area for the City of Flagstaff, and we want to make sure we're getting the most up-to-date services with any banking provider. We don't determine that price is the determining factor. It's just one of the factors that we want to rank and look at our... and look at our evaluation criteria on with the next bank that has our contracts. Qualifications and experience are really important in, in our area, and this is why an RFP is, is really a good tool to use. We get to pull out that information. People submit their qualifications, experience, and helps us understand how they can deliver the services that we need as an organization. And there are multiple services within what we're looking for banking services. It's just not having a bank to cash checks and make deposits. We do a lot in the city of Flagstaff. So it's very demanding, and we have multiple services that we want from a, a banking provider. There will be some minimum qualifications that we have. These are really critical for the city of Flagstaff and our assets, and managing our next bank, providing sufficient information to support. These requirements will be required. The contractor has to be insured for FDIC, federal deposit insurance. Very critical for our cash on hand or in the banks. And the state has a statute, or a couple statutes relate to collateralization of cities' assets, our cash in the banks. That is a, a method where banks really pledge their assets, be it securities or physical assets, to back what deposits we have in their banks. So should there be a, an issue where maybe they become insolvent, they have the assets that do give us the cash that we had in their bank. So it really is a critical piece to working with any kind of banking services. I've got a couple slides on all the services that we have, and that we would like to see within a banking services. We discussed this before, but I'm not going to go into all these in too much detail. But here are some of the key areas that I'll be looking for, and will be having in a procurement. Collateralization, like we talked about, that is very critical and required. How we do our deposits through local branches. We have multiple locations in the city that bring deposits to, to our banks. We want to make sure we, we take care of that. Cash handling processes are critical. Fraud protection. There's a lot of fraud out in the, in the world right now. We want a bank that helps us and secures our, our transaction with the protections. Disbursements. It's not just about cutting checks. There's many ways we pay our vendors. So we want a bank that can ensure that we can write checks, do ACH, Automated Clearinghouse Payments, wires, direct deposits, and those kind of things. Collections of funds. We don't just have a storefront to collect monies. We have many ways to bring payments into the city of Flagstaff. We need a bank that can work with, and work with us, and deliver those types of services that we have to assure our services. Reporting requirements within the RFP will be very important. Online access to our accounts, daily reporting, that type of stuff. Earning offsets, to offset our fees that they charge for transactions is really important. Having our cash idle in their bank should be a consideration for offsetting the charges that they want to charge us in a banking services. So those are critical things. Daily sweep of balances. Excess cash that may be in our bank would be liked to sweep to better investments, back and forth, an overnight sweep. And of course, there's additional items that we'll be asking for within the procurement. Some may be optional or required as we go forward. But just a lot of services that we need as a city organization. As part of the procurement, we will be applying to sustainable procurement. That council did update and adopt June 4th of this year. The new policy was Article 12 in the code, and this was specifically related to financial services. And so we will be given at least 10 points or 10% to the review of these respondents in our criteria. So we will commit to that.
Go ahead.
Go back a slide. Thank you. When I was reading over this, I was not clear on how the 10 points would be applied, because you have two issues there. You have a rating on the relationship with fossil fuel industries and their commitment to climate action. I did a little research, surprise, of the major banks that could present an RFP, or whatever the bidding process was, that could support the services that we require. Each and every one of them have a very robust sustainability, climate action goals, attainment, sustainable financing, where they're lending to industries that are working towards carbon neutrality, as well as, and I know our current banking relationship is the most well-known to have a relationship with fossil fuel. And I know I'm going to preach to the choir here a little bit, but it's really for the online audience that, you know, currently, you know, our petroleum products, our, our asphalt, our tires, our makeup, our lipstick, our, the grease that greases the turbines, windmills. You know, just, there's a list, you can check it on ChatGPT. They give you a very in-depth list of everything that we use for petroleum. So my point is that, you know, to, I, I know it's trendy for groups to want us to, want municipalities to not utilize banks that, that have relationships with the fossil fuel industry, but we're not there yet. I mean, we couldn't survive without them. Pharmaceuticals, makeup, just anything and everything we touch is still produced. It's not just gas. It's not just fuel for airplanes and cars. So anyway, how, since there's really two, two subjects here, the relationship with fossil fuel industries and the commitment to climate action, they all have commitments to climate action, and they're very in-depth, and they're very robust. So do you split it 5.5 points, or it's just the overall assessment between the two issues there? And then you, it's, points up to 10%?
Yeah, so it'll be a total of 10 points, and we will ask specifically for the proposers to identify what are your relationships with fossil fuel industries, as well as identify what you're doing to commit to climate action. Kind of two maybe separate questions, because they are kind of disconnected. That's how the procurement code is set up, to be able to give them that opportunity to respond to those two pieces. So that'll be built into the RFP for all respondents. And then we'll have a panel of five or so employees of the city on Flagstaff that will read into the whole procurement, level of services, experience, those kind of things, as well as this part. And they'll give their perspective of how well they responded. How much does it weigh as far as the fossil fuel commitment to the climate action commitment? And it'll be their scoring that decides where they land as reviewers. I'm not going to specifically guide them to say five points for this and five points for that. I think you've got to look at the big picture of both, when you're, when you're doing this review and procuring it. So I will leave it up to the reviewers to, to figure out what the balance of that number is for the 10.
And I would suspect, since you would be selecting the five, that it would be five that understand the complexity of banking. I've heard some comments, as this issues came up, we should look at local community banks and credit unions, which is absolutely impossible. It couldn't happen, but just because people that aren't familiar with the criteria and the complexity of especially a municipality banking needs, they would think, let's just go to our local, you know, bank next door, and that, they could not, they probably wouldn't even put a bid in, I would hope, knowing that it was far over their capacity. But I hope that the people reviewing it will also understand the complexity of the banking requirements that we have.
Yeah. I expect a lot of the team will be, have that financial background of it. Definitely our finance team, probably our customer service room, that does a lot of transactional work with our banks. Yeah, we haven't developed that full group yet. So I don't have a list to provide for that. But yeah, we definitely want that focus. But we want to also invite any banking industry to apply, and they need to go through the process, explain how they'll deliver the services. And we'll go through that.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So valuation criteria is what you use in our RFP process. You assign points or percentages to certain areas that are, are very important for you. And this is what I pulled almost from what the county has out on the street. So they went out and put a procurement for banking services. That was dropped in October of this year, and I've been working with Sarah Benatar at the county for the treasurer's office about what they're doing and how we're moving forward. So I am using their kind of draft, their RFP is my kind of starting point, and trying to build from that, the more of the city services that we provide versus county provides, and make it work for us. Their procurement closes on December 18th, so they're very close to closing on theirs. So these are some of the areas that are important. The capacity of responder, that is the ability to deliver services. We're going to provide all the services that we want to have as an organization, and they need to demonstrate how they can, they have the capacity to do this work. How they approach the banking services, our, our communication ways, how they implement things, and those kind of ideas will be scored at points. Fee proposing, fee proposal and pricing. We're going to give them a list of transactions that we do, either in a month or a year. We're trying to figure out how many transactions to give them, and have them price it out. What do you charge for this type of service? And then we'll have that for a comparison. Terms and conditions for a contract for RFP is really important, as well as the sustainable procurement for, for 10 points. So the county is very heavily weighed on the, the first item. They actually have about 45 points related to delivering service, which I would tend to agree. I don't know what my number is yet, but that is probably the most critical part of what I'm looking for in banking services, and what our city really needs as a city. Methodology approach, fee and prices, those top three is about 75% of their scoring. So those are the things that I would also focus on as we put this procurement out. Will, as we go through our first set of reviews, we'll identify if there's a couple banks that are really close to scoring, we may want to do another round, which is called an interview round. We'll set up some questions and comments, and let them do a presentation to our staff to provide additional ranking, to get a, maybe a movement on which one actually becomes the final awarded banking services. So that's how we're going to do the evaluation, as well as the interview process, potentially. And then last, I'd like to just kind of step through my timeline, which I hope I can successfully deliver. Today, we're giving you this update. We are moving forward. We are going to put an RFP out on the street and share that with you. I have to go out and reach with many, outreach with many of the areas that have connections with banking services. What are your needs? Are we getting what we need currently? Are there things we're missing? What do you need in a banking services? So I'll be going out and reaching with many sections and divisions within the city. Flagstaff Housing Authority is one of those. They're the city. So they will also have a new banking service. So I want to make sure that we're following HUD requirements within this banking contract that we're going to put together. So that'll be a very critical that we get it right. Once I get all those discussions together, and I hope to submit this to our purchasing team to review, make sure I got everything, and, and clean it up appropriately, and then submit it to legal probably by the end of January, so that we can get this out on the street in the February timeframe. I want this to be out for at least 30 days. I, I think as big as this procurement is, we deserve to give the banks the time they need to put a good proposal together. So we'll have about a 30-day period. And then probably early April, I, I hope if we have interview processes, we'll have those conducted, and then select our, our selected vendor in April. From that, we'll get the contract worked together, and we will actually have council approve and award the contract at a council meeting in May or June, for the contract to be starting July 1st. And one thing to note is, and I was talking to Sarah Benatar at the city treasurer, this is not a flip and switch thing. It's not something where you can start a service for banking on, on July 1st and turn off everything else. You've got outstanding warrants, you've got to start setting up accounts, you've got to change deposit slips. There's a lot of work to go with this. Her estimated time for the county is about nine months, to get all things transitioned to a new bank. I expect that would probably take us at least nine months. We are a lot more complex than what the county does in our services, but I would hope nine months we get there. So we will have dual banking contracts during the first period as we do the transition. So just informationally there. And it depends on who's awarded the contract. Is, how difficult is the transition? That is a question we're going to ask the, the respondents to explain. How do you envision a transition process going for services that we're looking for? So that is my update to council, and we will be moving forward with this shortly.
Thank you, Rick. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Rick. There's a lot of citizens groups that deserve credit for percolating this up to the surface, and thanks for all the hard work you're doing on it. I don't notice any of those voices represented in the audience today. I'm sure folks are paying attention. It's definitely been agendized. I'm wondering what you're doing directly to do our, do all of ourselves a favor, and make sure that some of those interested parties are aware of this timeline and know about our discussion tonight, and specifically the other public meetings we're having about it.
I haven't thought about that. I haven't thought about sharing the calendar, but it's probably something we can definitely send this presentation to them, and, and let them know what the timeline is coming up. Probably not a bad idea. Thanks.
I, I suspect you know all the names and addresses as well as I do, or certainly better.
I know, I know of one agency. I don't know many others than that.
We can brainstorm that at some point, if you want to help thinking through it. My other question is, what's the likelihood that the same institution will win this proposal?
Say it again?
What's the likelihood that the same institution we have now could win this procurement process?
It'll be a fair and equal procurement. I, it's hard for me to say which one's going to win.
Okay.
I don't know, I could give you any kind of lean way. It's, it's going to be a fair and open process.
Fair enough.
Council, oh, Councilmember Harris.
Given all the conversation earlier, was it this year or last year, the years are, come, whenever it was? We know that we're going to have a lot of folks coming out once they get, once they hear this, if they haven't already looked at the agenda and realized that it was happening, that you were giving us an update tonight. My concern is, and I'm not going to be on council, but my concern is, is that we'll get to a point where we have so many voices, so many, meaning like 20 maybe, voices, that don't represent everyone in our community, but their voices are loud, and they'll want to put a squash on this. How are we, how are we going to handle that?
So we're going to do the formal procurement and properly select the next banking services we recommend as, as staff. We could award the contract and move on, but we are bringing this to council for a decision. This will be on, on the dais for the council to decide. During that conversation, you may have public participation that says, don't agree to this contract, move on. Or they'll say, nope, put it back out, try again, a kind of conversation. I wouldn't recommend it, but we'll see what kind of conversations come, and where council lies with that, and what arguments they have. Then it'll be your decision, do you not award the contract, or do you move forward with the contract? That'll be on, on your shoulders. And if you don't go forward, we have to at least continue with our current bank while we develop or get direction on the next RFP.
Okay, I just thought I would put that out there, because you know it's going to come.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you. It's been several months, but my recollection is that when we did bring the policy part of this discussion to the dais, and that was last spring.
June 4th.
June, prior to the recess. We did put that out there. It was noticed and people were contacted. We did not have a lot of participation in that discussion. I thought it was an important discussion at the time. It was responsive to the petition that came in years ago. But it did not garner a lot of attention. I suppose, to your point, Councilmember Harris, when we get to the end game on this and it is time to make a decision, perhaps you'll have participation at that point. But in the very important policy discussion that preceded this, that was not the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I know that you have been, you've been working on this since we had the meeting where, where the petition was discussed. And I know that Nicole has worked with you and I want to thank staff. I want to thank everyone, Patrick, Rick, Nicole, everyone who worked on this. And I know at that meeting where we declined to just automatically, you know, tell you to switch banks or whatever, the public was upset that we took the time to, to put this kind of a policy in place. And I felt like I wasn't able to communicate well enough to the public that we didn't say no, we said there has to be a policy in place in order to back up going out to bid for these banking services. And so you have brought us exactly what we asked for. And I know it was a lot of work. And to the public, I just, you know, we, we, to the public, I just want to say we did listen and sometimes things take a while. And, and we heard you.
And sometimes you don't get what you want. In all honesty, what they want is for us not to go with a bank that is involved with fossil fuel, period, bottom line, that's what they want. And if that doesn't happen, we're going to hear about it.
So thank you. I know just getting this in place was a lot of work and going out for bids and evaluating those bids. It's, there's a lot more work ahead of you and I appreciate the amount of work that it takes.
Thank you.
All right, so moving down to open call to the public. I do not see any public comment. Informational items too from mayor, council and city manager, future agenda item requests. Let's start with Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a meeting yesterday with the mayor and staff and the, let me get the name of it right.
Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission.
It was, I thought, a very productive meeting. We talked about some of the issues that the Navajo people face here in town. And I think we came up with some good ideas that we're pursuing. And I look forward to the quarterly meetings to stay engaged and to really work with this commission to help address any concerns that they have. I'll be out for the rest of this week, so I'll see you all next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Just another huge thank you to staff and everyone for all the support you've given me over the last two years. I'll be at the Murdoch Center starting, well, I've already been there, but I'll be open for tea. Ms. Deb's Tea Party will be back on. So stop by and grab some tea or coffee. And there's always going to be something to stick in your mouth, like bread, cookies, banana bread, whatever. So, but thank you. That's all for me.
Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, forgot. Oh, and please, 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 come by and have tea with me, but see the new Murdoch Center. It is absolutely gorgeous. You will not recognize the building. You have to come in. Greg, facilities, where Scott, where he left? Okay, facilities did an amazing job. I just can't say enough about the work that they put into that building. The city has a, almost a brand-new building that they can be proud of.
I didn't realize that they were doing remodeling of the actual building.
Inside, they did paint. They're doing window treatments. They did lights. They did flooring. What else? Yeah, it's, it's absolutely gorgeous. You wouldn't, it makes the center look like it's a brand-new building.
Was this part of the resilience hub? Is that where?
No, this started before, this started before then. And I think it's all related to our real estate department. Is that the right, real estate department? They went around and did a survey of all the buildings that the city owns. And because it's their property, it's our property, the city's property, it was to their advantage to upgrade all of our facilities so that, because we have to take care of them. And so this is a way of taking care. Some deferred maintenance that hadn't been done in years got done. New ceiling tiles, you know, cold base, electrical sockets, a new fire system that wasn't in the building. So all of that stuff. So now our building, I think, is up to all the codes that it should have been up to before. And the Southside Community Association gets to enjoy it. So.
Do you have a date set for the grand reopening or the grand opening of the park?
No, we're going to wait till the, where did people go? They left. We're going to wait till the weather turns warm again, probably in the spring or the summer, so we can be out in the park and enjoy it. But the inside, as soon as we get everything moved back, all the furniture and stuff moved back out of the way and where it's supposed to be, because we had to pack up all that china so they could move it out and put the floor down. But the building is open, so please stop by and see it. We'll be there throughout the holiday. We'll take Christmas Day off and Christmas Eve and then we'll be back, so you can come and take a look. And I'm serious, have some tea or coffee or water. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I'm excited to hear all that. I will enthusiastically stop by one of these times I'm traveling down the road there. Hopefully, there'll be other events happening anytime soon there as well. I forgot to mention during our comments, Ms. Deb, I'm going to miss your candy corn and tuna snacks. In all honesty, you always bring a nice amalgamation of things that keep anybody's hunger at bay. Especially the candy corn. I do have something for you, Greg. This is regarding a future, future agenda item request. Trying to do a little bit of research and lay the groundwork and have the right conversations. I realize I don't know who our resident wildlife point of contact is in the city of Flagstaff. A name isn't readily coming to mind for someone who's an expert or specializes in area of wildlife. This is going to be specifically regarding bats, Kairoptera, not baseball bats, but the animal. You might guess where this is coming from and where it may be going, but have some thoughts. I just want to have the right conversations before I go any further with it. Maybe you and leadership can brainstorm the correct person to ask to join a meeting with me.
We will do that, if I may respond, Mayor. We'll do that. I think we, we know there's expertise in the community and probably NAU is connected with that expertise, but we'll find that out.
Already got that covered.
Okay.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I was pretty busy this week. I went to a Metro Plan meeting. I went through a Transportation Commission meeting. I went to a Bicycle Committee meeting. And yesterday, I was a guest speaker at a class, a high school class of seniors. And they were just asking me about, you know, how government works, et cetera. And one thing that kind of came up is they were saying, well, do you guys have a youth commission? I think we talked about a youth commission once. And I told them, I says, well, I don't know what's happening on that, but it may be in the works. So there was a class full of seniors that were very interested in that. And then I used to, I like to tell jokes and everything, but sometimes the joke is on me. I got to laugh out of this. Maybe you won't. The pen that I've been using for months ran out of ink tonight on my last meeting. I thought that was funny. Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet.
Couple of things. Last night, some of us up here attended the Stone Soup Event at the New Market of Dreams, and it was a great community gathering with a lot of wonderful soups. And it was, I think, my fifth year going. I just love it. This morning, the mayor and I did the Aspen Niche ribbon cutting. And that was a wonderful event. And again, congrats to all of those who were involved in beautifying our downtown with that. And Saturday is the Parade of Lights Downtown. Hope to see you there.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Also attended the Stone Soup Dinner last evening. That was a lot of fun. We, a couple of us, myself, Councilmember Matthews, Councilmember Sweet and Mayor, attended the Christmas tree lighting this past weekend, which was wonderful. We all, I think, got to hear a, one little girl in particular who was just so infatuated with seeing Santa. And she like shouted after the fire truck, "I love you, Santa," as we were rolling by. And it was just the most, it made the entire night worthwhile. This upcoming Saturday is, I believe, the Gun Violence Victims Remembrance Event at Murdoch Center at 2:00. And at the Stone Soup Dinner, I was invited and would extend the invitation to other members of council, particularly anyone who has a love of music and Christmas carols. That Canyon Chapel will be going through Sunnyside, doing Christmas carols on the streets. So if anyone would like to join, they are meeting at Canyon Chapel at 5:00 PM. And then just kind of walking, it sounds like we're going to be following along behind a truck that's playing the music, but we'll see how that works. So yeah, it sounds like it'll be a lot of fun. And last thing for me is just again, thank you for the service of Councilmember McCarthy and Councilmember Harris. And look forward to seeing you both in public comments and other spaces throughout the community. Thank you.
Now you both can really let loose at the podium and tell us what you really think. Yes, for three minutes. Yeah, Stone Soup, the New Market of Dreams is so wonderful, so much bigger than the old one. And they are going to be opening soon to all the entrepreneurs who sell items there. So definitely you need to put that on your list to see. A reminder that this is the last week to donate to Toys for Tots. And we have a box here in the lobby. And there are about 100 other locations around the city. In addition to the Holiday Parade of Lights, Master Corral has a concert at Flagstaff High School on Saturday. And Culture Connection, which is also downtown, is having their winter market. So there's tons of stuff going on downtown this weekend. And that's all that I have. City Manager?
Just wanted to echo the comments made about the ceremonial send-off this evening. It was very fitting and appropriate and quite heartfelt. So thank you.
All right, if we have nothing else, then we're adjourned.